On behalf of the Congressman Dona P, Julian, I present this congressional recognition to him. And also, on behalf of African 400 for the good deed that he's been doing, we present this to him. After becoming a racial African, yes, a slave, which started to show up this year, the next objective is: Where are we going? What do we do? And where are we at? That's what we're here to do. That's why we're here to dialogue. That's why our leaders are here, to answer questions that anyone of us may have, so that we can start to dialogue and switch into action. I cannot show you nothing as the representative of the foremost king in Africa, the Honour of Ife, and the artifact director of the Honour of Ife in the Americas. A lot of good things are awaiting our diasporic brothers and sisters, who are willing to return back to Africa, to help Africa, to help prosper Africa, to invest in Africa so that they can prosper. The continent is where the gold is, is where the honour is, is where the glory is. It is time for the descendants of Africa to benefit from Africa. You cannot be diasporic and look forward to reaping from back home. In order for you to win, you have to be in it. So it's time for us to allow it and see what we can do to move Africa and Africans forward. For that reason, at this time, it is my honour to quickly call on to recognize our partners tonight. And I will sweet call them, I mean, actually, to take their appropriate seat upon their table, so that we can actually move on. But before we call the partner, is it not appropriate? Ah, call the partner. Okay. We'll call the partner before this. So we have the partner sitting there appropriately. So, I'm not going to do introduction, because you have the introduction of these great people in your head. Also, we are known not to like to read, but I'm sure tonight we will read, in order to understand who is sitting or standing before you, and whom you want to direct your questions to. So, our partners, as I call them, please help me welcome them with a round of applause. The Honour of Ife. Because I can remember vividly, as soon as he ascended his throne, four years ago, we celebrated the fourth year, a couple of days ago, the fifteenth of December, when he ascended his throne in 2015. His mandate was the unity of the black race. And for a newly crowned Majesty to have left this kingdom and come to this part of the show was very ununderstandable to many people. But because he knows his mandate, he knows why he is on that sacred throne of the Oduo. And Oduo is the creed of humanity. That's where every human originated from. And Oduo holds the history of Africa, which is Imperial Majesty presiding today. So he came to America, he did what he had to, from city to county to states to DC, calling for the unity of the black race. That was an inspiration for me. Please give his Imperial Majesty, the Honour of Ife, a round of applause. And secondly, I'm a very big and proud supporter of my neighboring country, the country, the Republic of Ghana. I am inspired by Ghana. They're my brothers, they're my sisters. I know a lot about them because half of the Ghanaian citizen once resided in Nigeria at one point in time. But as of today, the majority of Nigerians reside in Ghana. In that showing that we are family, it tells me that we are brothers and sisters. We can remain well with one another. I've always been a big fan of Jerry Rollins. And you cannot talk about Ghana without talking about Jerry Rollins. If you're not talking about Jerry Rollins and you're talking about Ghana, you're wronged. Ghana is transformed today because of Jerry Rollins. I may not agree with his way of operation, but who are not to stand in the way of God? If that's what God lets him to do, so be it and let God be the judge. For whatever he did, Ghana is thriving today. For whatever he did, Kufuado is there today and Ghana is counting success and success. And I am very happy with that. Ever before Kufuado came into power, when Ghana decided to give right of old to the diaspora, it didn't come to be until Kufuado came into office. And in 2008, to fast forward, Kufuado declared, you know, year of return. And that's what actually brought a major awareness to Africans returning back to do diaspora, returning back to the continental Africa. But I would set the record straight. The loudest of Kufuado was heard by the diasporic Africans and lovers of Africa, and they acted on it. But the initiative and the mindset of his Imperial Majesty set the platform for that, because he continued to advocate for unity and return back to Africa. But when the president now comes into power, he makes it a reality. Please give it up for the president of Ghana, Kufuado. Thank you so much. Finally, the purpose of African 400 is very simple: to give back and build Africa and the Africans. African 400 is a hub to connect our brothers and sisters on this part of the show to the African continent, so that it can help improve Africa, it can help better Africa, and it can make money in Africa. Because it's their fatherland, it's their motherland, they're kings, queens, princes and princesses from the motherland. We are not slaves, they are not slaves. We are just forced into slavery, not by intention but maybe by necessity. And may the good Lord forgive us. But there is a reason for everything in life. We just have to learn how to get together and move on then. So, that being said, I am sure all our partners that are sitting before us, they know more about Africa. And I will just add and give everyone of them about, I say about, before it's supposed to be five minutes, but I'll give them about three minutes. We're going to be timing them. And we're going to want every one of them to say something about Africa. Or whatever comes out of their mouth and whatever the Lord let them to speak out to us, hopefully we that are in the audience can learn something from that, take notes and be ready to ask your question. That's the most important thing. We spend less time in talking about Africa, and we spend more time in finding solutions to Africa. If you have a question or a question you want somewhere, bring it up. And if we cannot have your question answered, I'm sure we'll exchange contact information. And then we can follow up. Don't assume that this will be the last time that you'll be meeting with them. There are going to be series of this coming up. So in preparation for you to earn from Africa, to help Africa, to build Africa, thank you everyone, and thank you.
As we look at this dynamic, talking about 400 years and beyond, I want us to first start off by thinking that or understanding that when we look at the experience of Africans in the Americas, we actually have to look back much, much further, right? So that the experience of Africans in America didn't begin within slavery. It began much longer before that. In fact, we can look at a couple of incidences. One is the book by Naim Makbar talks about the cave before Columbus, right, which is one evidentiary piece. And he wrote a second book, edited volume, to address that. But then, most recently even in a group of European archaeologists have done a dig in Brazil. And they found remains of Africans that have been in the Americas for over eight to nine thousand years. So that here we have who were the first indigenous folks in the Americas? We have to revisit that concept, right? So that we begin to start thinking that they were Africans here thousands of years before the migration that we talk about. And so therefore, it's not 400 years, maybe it's 8,400 years. And that would be a different way of looking at it. And then also, even if we use that kind of slave trunk as a way of thinking about it, we also have to begin to by looking at other incidences where Africans were here. So that people came here with the Spanish, right? The Spanish, and then you had the British, who had other things that were like right outside of the area. But Africans have been brought here since the 18th, since the 1400s. In 1500s, we have other documentation of folks being brought here much earlier. So then, those begin to be other places that we need to look at. And so we're paying respects and tribute, that we want to pay tribute for those who came in those earlier timeframe. Oh, I brought a couple of things to ponder. One is this map on, they have a whole discussion about the, what they call the lost colony in North Carolina, which is Ronoco Island. And you had all these Africans who were brought here, indigenous folks, and even Europeans who were brought here, who with the colony, they said so-called the colony, so-called, it failed, a failed colony. And so if you have a quote-unquote failed colony, what happens to the people who were there? Right? So many of them died, but some of them maybe got incorporated into and became part of the society. It's just that the Europeans who came with them no longer came back in a timeframe to have a communication or dialogue with them. But these people who came may have continued and they may have had other kinds of iterations of themselves at that place. So we got to rethink what that means. Another little small tidbit I brought for us is that in the Grand Canyon, there were, there's evidence of ancient comedic folks being here in the Americas. You can look at the pictures and stuff and see for yourself. But that folks have been here and that there's tombs in caves in the Grand Canyon that have ancient Egyptian or comedic artifacts. And so, if they were here, then maybe that's how you had the pyramids that began for the Incas and the Aztecs. That they had a dialogue with some Africans who had been here many thousands of years before. And so we have to once again go back and reassess that. And so, this doesn't take anything from those Africans who came as a byproduct of the British colonial empire, right? So that's what this 400 years means, the British colonial empire. But that there's, we have to add much more to it, right? And then when we add more to it, we have many more people we have to look at and reflect upon and celebrate and build upon and find out what are the other combinations, whether it's the Dutch or the Germans and the French, all of these different Africans who were brought to the Americas, what were their rhymes and reasons? I don't want to stop there, just because that's a point of entry. Thank you.
Thank you so much. A round of applause, please.
All right, we had what my brother on my right side said about the history of Africa. All right, so they know the order of path of the history of Africa. But coming from Africa, I think I came here about 20, 30 years ago. So, I've never lived in this country. So I lived in Africa all my life until I moved over here. So the African story that I know is the one that I know in Africa. And it's very unfortunate, even when he was reading everything about Africa, the worst I would think, maybe. So that means wanting to show who we are and how long we have been in this country. And looking at it, I look at it more because we did not write our history. When you allow other people to write your history, they will write it based on what they think. So our history is still a puzzle to us. And I'm encouraging everyone to go back and read a little bit. Because if you don't know who you are, other people would define you. So I think I'll force them in terms of going back. Because like I said, the history of Africa that I know is the one that my parents told me. And they were all no history, they were not written. But I feel, you know, I won't use the word "story". I'm a little bit hot that our brothers and sisters that came here many years ago did not have grandparents to tell them the story. And unfortunately, they don't read. So everything is a puzzle. So I think our first step is to find out who we are. We know a lot of people have written. So that means if we can go to the primaries, encourage our people to read who we are. Because once you know who you are, then you will be able to know the next step that you have to take towards recovering what you lost. So that's my opening speech. And so we continue. And then I'll give one other insight. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Gries, it's a pleasure to be here and to be in the presence of those who are ambassadors and very distinguished individuals that are here. I would like to just in an opening kind of like mention that in 2008, President Obama invited the 54 presidents of the various countries in Africa to come to the White House. And when they all came, of course, Leonard and I, as Africanists, we were asked to come too. And so we were there. In an emergency, the president of Nigeria had to go back because of the Ebola. The vice president, a female distinguished woman, was there on a platform in a grand auditorium. We had the guys forward and speaking. In the way, in the back of the auditorium, I opened the door and entered. She stopped what she was saying, pointed and said, "There she is", and I was shocked and surprised. But what she was not saying that I was one of the earlier door openers. Leonard and I were indeed door openers. My first trip to Nigeria was 1960 with a program that was called Operation Crossroads Africa. When my group came back with the other groups, the different countries, President Kennedy said, "Let us start the peace corps". So Leonard and I were very much engaged, Leonard creating, working from the office of 155th Avenue, went out every year to prepare programs for African-Americans and also all Americans to begin to come to participate in the joy of the difference, of different countries being, getting their independence from colonialism. So that revolution and fight was absolutely necessary in the history of African-Americans and in the history of Africa, the great leaders we have just heard from Dr. Kalafani, their name has been called. And so we continue that particular time with work. My academic skill, why you call me doctor, was because I got a PhD degree at Yale University in the history of art department. There, they were training me to do the history of art, not just in Africa, but all around the entire globe. My first job from there, there, was at the Metropolitan Museum of Art. I was there enough time so that when the treasures of ancient Nigeria came to the Metropolitan Museum of Art and traveled also to San Francisco and Chicago around the country, I was there. At the same time I was working there, I also was doing curatorial work for the African American Historical and Society Cultural Museum in Jersey City. My boss was Ted Brunson. You have a street named after him over there, 1841, Kennedy Boulevard. Fortunately, we have Neil Brunson here, his son. And I continue the work of his great father. His father had created, and he was there at the same time, such that we had teams whilst working. Mayor Brett Shunder of Jersey City was part of our team. We went down to Paula's Hook to save, and we were so glad when we talked to him, the group. And he said, "Yes, I'm interested", "I'm interested", because he wanted those slave underground railroad routes to be a special part of the national underground railroad system and to bring tourists from New York and other areas into Jersey City. The work was followed by Glenn Cunningham, Mayor Glenn Cunningham. Leonard and I, Leonard involved in the Black Studies Department, okay, I'm gonna...
Thank you, good morning. I have time.
Leonard was involved in African studies around the country at that time. And so I was also interested in working at Jersey City State University in the art department and also in Black Studies. Every year we would go to Africa. We had lived in Ivory Coast, 1965, 1966, where every year we were bringing back artifacts from different parts of Africa and giving them to the museum in Jersey City. And so we was looking forward for funds to eventually come forward to restore and even bring for some of the work that we had done there.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much for, it's a great honour to be here and to have this at this time. It's imperative that we begin to discuss the issues that concern Africa. And not just Africa, but Africa and each and every one of us. And I'll open it by saying this: I am not African because I'm black. I'm African because Africa is in me. And that's a fact. Now, practically categorical state that no black person on earth, any week, any day, any time, will be respected when they African is respected. So it's important that we begin to come together and put our minds together. Because we have the capacity to advance our cause. You see, Africa or being black will not be reft of intelligence, of brilliance, of excellence. It's just that often enough we do not recognize it or celebrate it. Because if we do, by a matter of fact, this room will be filled. Now, one of the biggest issues and challenges that we have as Africans is that again, we do not raise our young ones and propel them and get them ready for the future. And that comes to a point of mentorship. Now, I'll say this: for any race to advance their cause, they must be able to control three aims, they call it three aims. And that's money, military, and media. Money we don't have. Because if you take a look at the African continent, when you talk about the economy of Africa, I mean, Europe, or the US GDP or GDP per capita, that's 64,000. Africa's GDP per capita is $1,700. And that's a far cry. And the biggest of all of them, the richest per capita of African continent, it's about 34,000, which is Guernica territory, followed by South China. And the poorest of them is Somalia, which is about $500 or less in capita. And that's a dismal disappearance. Now, the other aim we talk about is military. You need money to control the military. We can't afford that because we don't have the money. Now, the other one we talk about is the narrative or media. We don't tell our story because we do not control the media. And that's a fact. Until your story is told by you, the narrative about you will be written or done or talked about by other people. So the only chance we have in having a chance to control any of those three aims is media. And we see what's happening right now. We have a voice. And the voice is in internet, in movies, in music. And that's the story we have all our lives. But we've been taken, broken down and scattered for a definite purpose. Now, the third one I call the aim, the fourth aim, that's very imperative, paramount to Africa, is the aim of mentorship. We need to begin to learn to mentor our young ones and begin to shield them the road. Because those middlemen that walked, they did all that. And some of them, I would say, did raise a few, but got lost. The first problem with the African continent is this: we take three steps forward and six steps backwards, often enough. But then the reason why we sit down here is to redefine the narrative of the Africa. But I tell you right now, the younger generation on the march, if there's anything we're going to talk about advancing the cause of Africa, and not just the African alone. Now, when I say African, I mean the African and the blackness need to acknowledge all of you. Meaning, go back home,
Meaning, go back home, tell the story that you heard, that you heard from your parents, and that you heard from your uncle. The story of your narrative, the story you write. Bring your young ones and talk to them about it. Let them see what the future is like. Because these young ones also know the future. And we need to craft a path for them, just like those great ones craft a path for us. And that's what I would say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. To join everyone here, this is an important start for us. And truly in our tradition, they say the best for later. I know, George. We have to understand that we're on the precipice of an important movement of our people globally. But you cannot move if you do not have control over the various systems. The youngsters who were before me have done the Dr. Calafani. He has done enormous job in Essex County, even carrying Essex County's foundation to the world, to China. Most recently came back to China. But as wonderful as he is, he's the best that I've seen coming up on me. Sometimes you get too fast and you just stumble a little bit. He started going and he got stumbled, I said, "Goodness." So I said, "I can't advise him" because I've never seen anybody under me that's as strong as he is. But he jumped out there so anxious to give you a message that he messed up. That's what happens when you're pushing hard, you gotta get so much in. He was so excited and he wanted to jump up there and he said, "They came before Columbus, yes." That's an outstanding goal that everybody should aim. Their team's around the book. Hey, you gotta see, you gotta, right. He was so quick, he jumped out there wanting to give Naim Akbar. Yes. Thank you for that great work. Naim Akbar stands on his homework. He comes out, trained from the European side in terms of psychology. And he can go with Dingsworth's psychology and the mental thing. And he has partnered with a number of great brothers and sisters, including Dr. Francis Chris Wellsing, enormous giant in terms of knowledge, and his partner. Because it's about family, that's what we're talking about. I'm speaking to him as his elder. There's a love and appreciation in there we cannot even measure. So we're not CSS, as in the root of the CSS family. But when you talk about Naim Akbar, you talk about Dr. Wade Nobles. You talk about Dr. Francis Chris Wellsing. You have to talk about the one that came up under her, Dr. Pat Newton. And all of us have been involved in African, we were born and stood as three mothers and chiefs, the Africans on the continent, and saw the potential that we could be vampires and lingam people. And so, you may not mean notoriously as Dr. Leonard Jefferson. You put it in and you say, "Oh my goodness, this must have been a lot of..." And he said, "But I'm most proud of the Africans seeing my potential and give me an African name, you know, an African stone name among the Akkana, they chant his name, Nala Kwekuchwana Ajwan II of the Ogogo Stone in Asante." They took two royal names, two kingship names, and they blended them together. And they said, "Go forth, brother, and do your work." So it's been a marvelous thing. So we have to apologize. We could even begin to start to let you all know what we would want you to know, or even let you know to begin. Also, this is the textbook that we had to have. Then I was at a textbook. This is the textbook that she helped create. She helped produce with Malapri Santi and with others, African Americanist, The Journey of Liberation. And lesson plans are there. So most of us have school jobs, or museum jobs, or community jobs. We need to have a textbook like this in our hands. You don't have to redo, you have to recover. And then build on that. So we are about Africanizing our lives. Now, we got to take that message back to Africa. Because there's at least, Africa has 800 million, maybe a billion people because the Muslims hide their lives. So we don't know how many people have to, of course. And remember, that's the truth, you all. I was in Nigeria in 65, when it was taking a census. And we had ready to have a war. And I first went down from 61, 2, 3, 4, and here I am in Nigeria in 65. And the people in the South saying, "We will not be ruled by cattle and fires." And I knew then we were going to have a war. And they did. I can feel it moving into different parts of Africa. If you're African, you're ready to have a war for no good reason. The war should be against the system of white supremacy, the system of Arab supremacy and exploitation. It shouldn't be against Africans. We got to move away from that. We're not our West Indies. We are who we've been looking for. And that's why they came up with this 400-year process. And it fits me like a glove. Because I like to talk about 500 years, 200 years of history. I got that from Dr. John Henry Clark. And this is a great book that he produced, one of his great works, Africans at the Crossroads: Notes for an African World Revolution. If you do not have this brother's book and you do not understand his life and what he's done now, he met so many people like Nkuma and the rest of us. We are his tiger dogs. So if Dr. John Henry Clark is not in what you're doing, you're not going to Africanize your lives the way you should be. You're going to be pussyfooting around with it. This one's the greatest man who does not have the PhD and the DDD's that we all have. He comes up from...